City Glendale Common Council is now in session. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our clerk is out and the deputy city administrator is sitting in for the clerk. Ms. Ballwig, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Alderman Bailey's excused.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Also excused.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comment Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right, and online doesn't have anybody that isn't council or staff. All right, so we'll move on consent agenda. We had three items. The approval of our minutes of our last meeting, request for the extended holiday hours at Target and Kohl's. And as you recall, on this item, the first one comes to us and once we approve extended hours for the holiday time, after that, it's a discretion of the clerk. The clerk can just issue approvals for that after that for once. We just have to set the precedent of extending it once for the holiday season and then the clerk can continue to extend for anybody else that requests. There's a payment for work done on the water main project and the monthly reports to be placed on file. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Moved by Doherty, seconded by Gelhard. Any discussion? Okay, without objection, we will consider the consent agenda adopted. Hearing no objection, we'll move on to our unfinished business. The first item is a public hearing on an ordinance amending thirteen point one point three seven point five to allow indoor self-storage facilities. And this is pertaining to a request that came in to allow, sorry, in the B five zoning district, which is along Mill Road. And this is based on a request that came in asking for one to be allowed in the B five zoning district. So that's why it's before us. It has been sent to the planning commission. The planning commission did not hold a public hearing. They waived the public hearing, but we waived the public hearing there. So the only public hearing is being held here. Mr. Warwick, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
I know that's sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, the planning commission did unanimously recommend it back to the council for approval, but we will then open. Is there any questions for any members of the council? All right, this is then an ordinance regarding regarding the allowance of indoor self-storage facilities as a conditional use in a B five zoning district. And the B five zoning district is specifically along the south side of Mill Road. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to testify in the public hearing about the allowance of self-storage facilities in a B five zoning district? And a second call, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? And third and final call, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council on the subject of indoor self-storage facilities in a B five zoning district during this public hearing? Okay, a public hearing having been properly noticed and open to the public was held. No one has shown up to testify. So at this point, I would entertain a motion from a member of the council to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Gelhard, seconded by Bukovic. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The public hearing is now closed. So before us is an ordinance now that we for us to approve. It has been sent back to from the plan commission with a recommendation that we approve that would allow indoor self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the B five zoning district along Mill, the south side of Mill Road. Can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance as it has been sent back to us by the plan commission? Second, moved by Bukovic, seconded by Schmelzling. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Okay, we have a second public hearing tonight. This is an ordinance repealing thirteen point one point thirty four C and thirty seven B of Title thirteen. This would permit a childcare or daycare centers or preschool centers licensed by the state of Wisconsin as a conditional use in a B four zoning district. And the B four zoning district is along Green Bay Road between Silver Spring and Bender Road. So there, Mr. Warwick, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no further comment. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So this was sent to the plan commission. The plan commission reviewed it and did send a unanimous recommendation back to the common council. However, we had to notice a public hearing. The only public hearing is being held by the council. So are there any questions for any members of the council before I open the public hearing? All right, I'm now going to open a public hearing on an amendment to the B four zoning office research service business district that would allow for childcare, daycare or preschool centers licensed by the state of Wisconsin to be permitted as a conditional use. Is there anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? Second call, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council during the public hearing? And third and final call. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak in the public hearing, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing regarding childcare centers.
Alowed.
Moved by Gelhard. Seconded by Bukovic. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, this public hearing was properly noticed. We did open it on time. We heard no responses from members of the public. So before us is an ordinance repealing those above named sections and amending other sections of our city ordinance code to permit childcare, daycare or preschool centers licensed by the state of Wisconsin to be a conditional use in the B four zoning district, which as I indicated earlier is along Green Bay between Silver Spring and Bender. Can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
The moved.
Moved by Gelhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. It is adopted. And this also, by the way, was submitted based upon a request from an individual wanting to buy a property that they're going to turn into a daycare center. So. All right, new business tonight. We only have one new business item, although it may be a lengthy item. This is the annual meeting where the city administrator will present to the mayor and council the twenty twenty five draft budget. And we he will also then indicate the public hearing schedule based upon the timeline of the newspapers publishing our notices. So I will now turn it over to the city administrator.
All right, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Just trying to make sure the screen sharing occurs. So hold on one second.
Yep, we can see it.
Thank you very much. So thank you, everybody. And I just want to first, before we get into the budget presentation, thank all the staff members, particularly everybody in this room that helped put the budget together. We've had a lot of action going on here in the city, including an election and a lot of other things going around. And for the staff members to take a significant amount of time out of their day to help put the budget together. And one that I feel is very accurate and very reflective of the revenue and expenses here at the city. Just wanted to first thank everybody for helping out on that. So we'll talk about the twenty twenty five draft budget, which includes actual numbers for twenty twenty three, budget numbers for twenty four, what we feel our estimated year-end revenue and expenses for twenty twenty four will be. And then the proposed budget numbers for twenty twenty five were the accounts that are listed there, including general fund, proprietary, special revenue, capital and debt funds. So I wanted to start off, you know, with two minutes left in the game. You know, we're sort of on our two-minute warning. Just if someone gave me two minutes to talk about what what this budget says, these are sort of the highlights. Basically, the general fund in twenty twenty four performed much better than what was projected. We had anticipated about a thirty thousand dollar surplus with our estimated year ends. We're projecting about a three hundred thousand dollar surplus in the general fund. And then a small deficit of thirty two thousand dollars is projected for twenty twenty five. We do fund all of our North Shore intergovernmental agreements, of course. The twenty four and twenty five budgets for the water utility do include the partial year for the PSC increase and then the full year in twenty twenty five. We've been remaining around one million dollars for hotel revenue. We anticipate doing that in twenty four and twenty five. So those numbers remain very consistent. We did increase the numbers pretty good for the general funds contribution for special events and R E M Park. Probably a further discussion on the future of what we want to do with both of those items, particularly when the expenses are increasing and the revenues are decreasing, particularly for R E M Park. We saw substantial increases in revenue and in expenses, and it's a good thing here by adding the brown deer branch to the North Shore Court. With that new employee, new task, all the revenue for brown deer now comes to the city and is distributed through the city of Glendale. We now have the combined refuge, recycling and yard waste fund, which is called Refuge and Recycling Fund. All of the environmental funds are remain an environmental fund with significantly lower revenue and expenses to remediate the items of the Bender Road landfill. All the projects that were included in the ten-year capital plan are included in the budget. There are some minor additions and some changes that we'll talk about when we get to capital. And then in the crime prevention fund, we have costs for a new canine, partially in twenty four for the purchase of a vehicle and in twenty five for the outfitting of that vehicle. And then the purchase for a new dog. If anyone could guess the amount of the dog that would be, that's a trivia question. It is.
Doesn't the bricks golf outing cover the cost of the dog?
Yes, a hundred percent of these costs, including the car, are funded by that golf outing.
Fifteen thousand for the dog.
Very close, seventeen, I believe.
Seven seventeen thousand. But yes, the the program is funded by the the fundraising that we do through the golf outing.
Okay, city doesn't pay anything at all for the for the vehicle or the dog? Or is it just for the dog?
Everything is paid for through that, through the fundraising.
Oh, well, okay.
And and different donations. We just get individual donors as well that just put towards it.
That includes the bills and like that for the dog.
Okay.
And then the final point down here is that all debt and TIF obligations were met in twenty four and twenty five in the budget. So that's my two-minute warning. Not sure on the time there.
About four.
Four, sorry. We did. You had.
We get timeouts.
Yeah, it was the Price is Right rules that I was going to institute, you know, fifteen oh one.
Think I feel goal at the end to win the game. Let's hope so. All right. So we'll first quickly hit on property taxes, which is obviously the city's largest revenue source. You know, in twenty twenty five, it's going to account for about forty five percent of revenue. Last year it accounted for fifty one. That's due to some adjustments in the water rates and then the refuge and recycling rates. So it lowers the percentage of property tax that is relied upon. And you see below the general fund is funded by about ten million dollars in property taxes, about sixty seven percent of total revenue. The other big one, debt services, four million dollars is twenty seven percent. And then the other three areas for the special revenue funds is eats up about six percent of total property taxes.
Keep in mind that some of those debt services payments are actually ones that we've taken out on behalf of other consolidated entities, like all the money we borrowed for the fire department is in there. The other municipalities pay us, but four million is still what we're paying in debt services for the year, even though a chunk of it is absorbed by the other communities.
That is correct. And then they refund us their portion.
Right.
We pay about thirty percent.
Right.
So the property tax levy, we're allowed to increase the levy based on that new construction. We didn't have the greatest year. There were some North Shore communities that do decrease in their net new construction. We fortunately weren't that, but we only went up point one nine percent, which is obviously far less than what CPI is on an annual basis.
Will we see a significant jump next year because of the opening of all of the Bay Shore apartments?
That is still in the TIF district, so that won't be realized until the expiration of that TIF, I believe.
I I thought that all construction still adds, it's still part of the gross equalized value of the city. It's just excluded from the tax levy.
Yeah, it is. Unfortunately, it counts towards like our North Shore fire equation in terms of what we pay, but it's excluded from the money we get because it goes towards the TIF.
Okay.
But twenty thirty six, there'll be a huge jump. One, there will be one in twenty twenty eight as well for the the tip eight. The additional debt service tax levy of seven hundred ninety one thousand dollars, that primary increase is from the improvements of I forty three. And then, like the mayor said before, North Shore Fire Department building. The are actually our levy is projected to decrease by twenty point four two percent based on the increased valuations in the city. I project right now, based on what our valuation is and what we collect in property taxes, our tax levy should be around five point eight six from seven three six. This is, of course, taking the equalized value divided by property taxes to get this. So this isn't exact, but it should be pretty close to what the tax levy decreased based on the increased valuation within the city. Because we have to maintain our property tax level, even though property values increased. So this is just a breakdown of the property tax valuation. The bottom number is the general fund share, which is ten million. Middle one is special revenue. And then the top one is the portion dedicated towards debt services. This chart here again represents the the net new construction number that the city receives at the bottom. So it's always been below one percent. And then CPI, which hopefully and continues to go down, it did peak in twenty twenty three, continues to go down to three point two this year, has remained significantly higher than the net new construction numbers that the city does receive. I think we saw this chart last year, but the city is about twenty seven percent of the total tax levy on a tax bill that maintained from last year to this year. So this chart, again, we saw last year too, but it is different because there is no personal property tax in the property tax levy anymore. It's simply industrial, commercial and residential. The residential does take up a greater share because of that. But industrial, two percent, commercial, forty two, the rest residential. We are very fortunate to be a city funded nearly fifty percent by non-residential property taxes. As a municipality in Wisconsin, we do have expenditure restraint. It is a voluntary program. We're allowed to increase our spending by CPI plus sixty percent of net new construction. If we adhere to that, we receive about an additional two hundred thousand dollars in revenue on an annual basis. We 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 bet that requirement in twenty four. We assume in the budget that we will meet that levy restriction going forward in twenty twenty five. We also have some internal controls that we've adhered to too. To me, this is this is a good sign of our financial strength here in Glendale is to not use more than five percent of next year's budget towards the fund balance and have a goal of twenty five percent of the fund balance. The the deficit in the general fund is half of a percent of the fund balance we project to use, so a very low amount. But we will add three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars to the surplus in the general fund, which would estimate right now to bring our general fund balance to forty two and a half percent of our general fund spending. That's, of course, a self-imposed regulation, but that shows the good health to hopefully continue to grow one day to have a fifty percent fund balance would be a nice mark to have. This is the showing last year, the the state of Wisconsin passed one of the largest increases in in government aid back to local municipalities. This chart demonstrates that slow increase in twenty four and then the full increase in twenty twenty five. It's that per capita number that increased in twenty four a little bit and then fully in twenty twenty five. So we're now just over nine hundred thousand dollars in state shared revenue when we had about six hundred in total. Any questions before I move on to some of the numbers and estimated year end and then the budget?
So Carl, what happens with that increased state shared revenue? I mean, do we know what we're going to do with that extra money?
But really, it's part of the reason why we have such a close balanced budget of thirty two thousand dollars. Without that increase, we probably would be seeing a couple hundred thousand dollar increase, or we would be talking about additional cuts to things in other areas if it wasn't for that increase. Now, we did.
Actually, rescue is the new construction.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, so it's really already included in the budget as a revenue line item and to help offset. Now, we we do project a small deficit. We did project a small surplus last year, which we performed much better. And hopefully, we do that by a couple hundred thousand dollars again. So that should hopefully help us moving forward. So again, here in our performance, you know, our for this is for the general fund, we have a hundred nineteen thousand dollar revenue above budget. Ninety nine percent of that is because interest earnings have been significantly higher than what we had anticipated. We did lower that number significantly in twenty twenty five as interest rates go down. We did also have lower than anticipated building permit revenue in in twenty four. We anticipate that bouncing back in twenty five because we have three construction projects that are underway, which will hopefully by themselves equal what we we get on an annual basis. We we anticipate general fund expenses to be lowered by about a quarter million dollars than what we had budgeted for a surplus of three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. The proprietary funds, we project a small surplus of forty seven thousand dollars. We did going into the budget year project a two point one million dollar deficit. We didn't do a couple community or capital improvement projects in twenty twenty four as a result of the I forty three project. Plus, we had a large deficit in water before the rate increase. So those both helped to close the gap for a small surplus. Special events fund and the R E M fund do project small deficits in twenty twenty four, hence the increase from the general fund that's already been accounted for. North Shore Courts project to operate at a deficit. We hope to close the gap on that by the end of the year. So we we did close the gap a little bit, but hopefully a little more. Twenty twenty five, we will not show any deficit in North Shore Court as a result of adding the Brown Deer Court. So if there's no other questions, I'll move on to twenty twenty five.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
You listed the mill rate a couple slides back at seven thirty six last year.
Yep.
According to the online budget that was the 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 city budget we have posted on the website from your presentation last year, it was seven dollars and three cents.
Seven dollars and three. Okay, that's taking the the again, the property tax divided by the assessed valuation. So if one of those was off a little bit, or it's not necessarily rounding thing with that big a difference, but I'll look into that.
Yeah, so the the five, it'd be five eighty six down from seven oh three.
Okay.
Which is still a significant drop, but not quite a a buck fifty.
Look into that thing.
Uh huh. It's on page eight of last year's budget present, the hundred and thirty one page budget that's online. It's on page eight.
I suppose you found that that quickly.
Well, I had last year's budget up because I was looking at it. So with the tab already open, it was very easy. So I looked at it before the meeting tonight.
We get back to this estimated year end. So draft twenty twenty five budget. These are the funds we have, you know, most of our revenue and expenses in the general fund. And then we have the special revenue proprietary and then capital funds.
All right, I'm going to ask one more question about the stuff we were on. You also showed residential property taxes this year at fifty six percent of the budget?
That is correct.
Last year it was fifty two.
Yeah, that's because we eliminate or the state eliminated the personal property taxes, which accounted for about three, four percent. So by just, again, this is a very rough distribution of base based on our assessed valuation of where the 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 E A V is, which is residential, commercial and industrial is two percent. So by eliminating the personal property tax, it makes the residential share of our assessed valuation higher. How the state distributes that based on what the tax levy will be, I have no idea how that will work. That's why some of these numbers will.
Last year, commercial was forty four, personal property was two and industrial was two. So personal property, that has to do primarily with business properties, correct?
Yeah, that's ninety nine percent, maybe a hundred percent.
So basically, that two percent essentially got passed over to residential?
They the state said they weren't doing that. So we are, and Jessica, if you have any information on this.
Well, I mean, the money has to come from somewhere.
It's got to come from somewhere. And the the state had said initially they are making up that revenue loss. So I don't know, Nathan, if you know exactly how they're making that up, whether or not they're just allowing the increase to be distributed based on your E A V or they're providing supplemental revenue. I'm not sure, but we're assuming they are fully making that up by the property taxes here and not distributing anything more.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be supplemental.
Oh, it is.
It won't be able to hear you unless you're talking into the microphone.
I think it's going to be supplemental revenue.
Okay.
From based upon from what I've.
Well, we've been making a pretty gradual increase of in the commercial to get us to the point where within the next few years, we thought we were going to be at essentially fifty fifty. And this is like a significant drop back at fifty six percent now is being borne by residential property taxpayers.
Yeah, when you take out a sig, not a significant, but a decent portion that was dedicated primarily towards commercial enterprises, then yeah, it's going to put the E A V back on residential.
Okay.
Yeah, and I really have not seen from looking at the budget, and neither have the other administrators on where this makeup of revenue is going to come from, from the state.
So that the extra three hundred thousand dollars they gave us in shared revenue doesn't meet the two percent that we lost in personal property tax?
The the two percent that we lost in personal property taxes is still assumed in the tax levy because we're allowed to levy for what we had in the past. We just assume that that two percent is not coming from personal property tax, that it will come from this distribution right here.
Basically, the state did away with the business property tax and now homeowners are going to be picking up some of the share of it.
That certainly might be the case. Nathan and I will look into that a little more tomorrow to see if we have any further questions on or answers for that.
That's disappointing. Okay, thank you. I'm done. Sorry, I asked a whole bunch of questions here, but because I was looking at last year's budget earlier today because, you know, I wanted to be able to sort of compare where we were from last year. So all right, I'll let you keep going.
It's a very good question because I remember that was one of the things that we asked when that was going through legislature is, you know, what's going to happen with that? And
Right.
we still don't apparently have guidance. So.
Well, the the other thing is we've also put such a focus on trying to get more trying to get maximize the amount of value out of business properties that I was really looking, I was watching those numbers go from forty percent, you know, when I was elected in twenty fifteen, and we were up last year to your residential was down to fifty two. If it were only a couple more years, then it's going to be fifty fifty. You know, we put a heavy investment in in pursuing large business ventures to, you know, buy a property for a million dollars and turn it into a twenty five million dollar property, those kind of things in order to boost the commercial value of the city so that homeowners are paying less of the burden of running the city and businesses are picking up a bigger share. And so I guess I'm just disappointed to see that, you know, just based on doing away with the personal property tax, you know, we see those those numbers reversing significantly. Also, this year with the revaluation, personal or homeowners did see a significant boost in the value of their homes.
Residential property did increase significantly more in value than commercial. So there has to be a percentage weight on that too, whether that's one or two percent. And also, I'm not sure if this was in here. I did look at the tax rolls, but the the Bay Shore apartments, like you said before, that is a residential property. It does get added to the assessed valuation of the city too. So that could be accounted for a little bit of that switch too.
Okay, so by next year, or actually Bay Shore is not done yet. Some of it didn't get, some of it wasn't finished and wasn't in the value for this year because it would have been as of January first. Okay. All right, any other questions from members of the council? Jim, I saw you unmuted a moment ago. Do you have a question?
No, I was just saying that probably the residential going up quite a bit, but it's going to be a piece, but still, Brian, when you compare us to someone like Whitefish Bay, pretty healthy mix.
Sure, sure. No, I get that. Thank you. All right, Carl, sorry.
No problem. Let me just get back to this slide. Don't apologize. Stop me at any point. So we make the following assumptions, you know, these are pretty standard assumptions we make, you know, no increases in certain things that here in. You know, no increases in certain things adhering to the levy requirements, volunteer expenditure restraint program. We pay all of our health insurance, employee wages. We do the wage adjustments per discussions that, that we've had. Um, and we adhere to the um adopted ten-year capital plan. There was a couple minor changes, like I said before, that we will talk about once we get to the capital plan. Um, so on this side here, this is sort of where we wanted to talk about some of the major amendments. Again, this might go a little bit back to that two-minute warning thing, so I'll be brief on this. We did talk about the refuge recycling and yard waste being combined in a new fund, environmental fund, the addition of the North Shore Court, um, increased contributions from the general fund to special events and R E M Park. Um, that was a total of forty-some thousand dollars in additional revenue that was allocated towards both of those. Um, uh, expenditures for a new part-time administrative assistant position, um, and then an additional desk clerk position. So this is essentially adding a desk clerk position that was a part-time position to make it a full-time position. We've had, and, and Chief Fugman can fill in where I miss, is that had trouble filling some desk spots at nights, particularly on the weekends with the part-time position. So the recommendation was to make that go to a full-time, and that was included in the budget that way. Um, and then costs for contractual planning and economic development services um with Vandewall, and then the financial support agreement that was approved previously by the council, also some of the major amendments in the budget. Uh, so this is the total property tax um by percentage. Um, most of it, of course, is property taxes and water sewer funds, approximately seventy-five percent of our total revenue. Uh, the rest of it makes up about twenty-five percent. As you can see, there's some zeros at the end for R E M Park Special Events, so those are, are very small parts of it. And it just shows the, the magnitude of, of revenue sometimes when the hotel and recycling each are about a million dollars, and they total each about three percent of, of um revenue from, from the city. Uh, so again, this is revenue by type, same chart, just shows it instead of by percentage by, by a line, and it just shows the city's reliance on property taxes and municipalities across the state's reliance on property taxes, and hopefully in the future, the state can work out a way to not rely so heavily on property taxes to fund local government operations.
Where does state and federal aid fall? Are they in the other general fund, or do they fall under intergovernmental?
I believe I put those under intergovernmental.
So like, for example, state money toward the, the payment or the fina- the financing of the Silver Spring Project?
That's all in capital, so that's not included in here. This is operations. The intergovernmental would be um the per capita number that the city receives, expenditure restraint program, um revenue like that.
Head revenue.
Correctance. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so now we'll talk about the expenses. Um, you know, this is the big, big portion of it, and obviously, you know, as a municipality, we're very people-based, particularly in our um public safety and police world. Uh, it makes up nearly eleven million dollars in total salary and benefits costs. Um, you know, followed, you know, very closely by debt, um is nine point seven million dollars. I sort of left that off to the side just to show, you know, the debt continues to grow as a big obligation. About three million of that is, is TIF eight, so once that falls off here in a couple of years, the debt number will lower. Um, but that's not really debt of the city, it's debt of the TIF, but we still do make the payment, so it is our debt. Um, intergovernmental expenses, nine million dollars, uh more than half that is the um North Shore Fire intergovernmental agreement, um M M S D, North Shore Water Commission, I T, library, health department, all make up all of those, I T, um and court, of course. So that's a big, big amount of our operations, and then contractual numbers for operations too is five point one million dollars. So these, as a whole and divided, allow the city to operate in different ways through contractual intergovernmental and obviously salaries. Um, so if we sort of break it down, you know, the, the big number here is obviously public safety. It's about seven million of the total nine million dollars worth of personnel expenses, um, followed by, you know, public works is the next two, which total about two billion dollars. Of our contractual expenses, you know, the two big ones are stormwater um improvements and um re- refuge and recycling, um water repairs, sanitary, so all of those sort of utilities that the city has really um is funded a lot by the contractual expenses that the city has. So this is just basically a summation of all contractual expenses put in different areas for the city.
The engineering costs, that hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's our contract with Clark Deets?
Where are you seeing that?
Uh-
Oh, one hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's essentially our hourly rate, um ba- basically depending on what the year end is for um water, storm, sanitary, and general fund assistance from Clark Deets. That's the operational number. That doesn't include capital projects, you know, such as the Silver Spring Project, which was five hundred thousand dollars. So this is simply our operating contractual stuff.
Thank you.
Uh, the final, and you know, big component too, is obviously our intergovernmental expenses. Um, the North Shore Fire is about three point nine million dollars. That doesn't include the contribution towards debt services for any of the, the stations that we pay. Um, the sewer is, you know, primarily the M M S D contribution for sewage. Um, North Shore Court is that million dollars. Those are essentially contributions that the city makes to the state, the county, Bayside and Brown Deer for their share of the North Shore Court revenue. Um, water treatment is North Shore Water Commission, the library, dispatch. Um, this essentially lists all of our North Shore.
Um, the court, for example, doesn't really cost us a million dollars a year. We get fines that essentially cover the cost of the court, but a share of the fines have to go to the state, and that's the million dollars.
Yeah, it's the state, the county, and then a portion goes back to Bayside and Brown Deer based on the number of tickets that are adjudicated in that year. So, yeah, I mean, it's really a wash. You could almost eliminate that from here, but they are intergovernmental costs that the city have. That's why I do reflect that on here. Same with M M S D. We really collect the same money that we send to M M S D based on what their rates are. So it's really a wash-in, wash-out, but it's still an intergovernmental expense that the city has. All right, you wanna?
It's always good to show it that way, Carl.
Thank you.
Uh, just to follow up, I knew this was in Act twelve somewhere. Um, the question was, what happens with the repeal of the personal property tax in twenty twenty-five? Because we know what happened in twenty twenty-four, so in the act, it says that in, in, beginning with twenty twenty-five, um, it requires the Department of Administration to provide aid to local, local taxing jurisdictions in the amount equal to the taxes that were levied on items of personal property tax based on assessment as of January one, twenty twenty-three, which is, which was the last year of the assessment. So that's what's baked into the-
So, so while the personal property had remained, would have gone up every year because it does. Um, instead, we're gonna get a fixed number based on twenty twenty-three, so in twenty thirty-five, we're still gonna be getting a number based on twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that's if they don't sunset it before then.
Yeah, there, I guess there's that too.
That shows up in the intergovernmental, like the expenditure?
Yeah, I had baked it into the property tax amount, but once we get down to the finite details of that, we will amend that to, to change it, yep. And though that's an answer I didn't have and wasn't able to come up with, so I just baked it into the property tax. Figuring we have a month to sort of finalize some of these things, so we'll work to rem- remedy that number. Uh, so this is the end of the um, the, the charts here for, well, not the end of the chart, sorry. Um, so this is the general fund for twenty twenty-five budget. Um, pretty funny that, not funny, but the property tax accounts for seventy-six percent of all revenue. If I slip the slide real quick, it accounts for seventy-four percent of all public safety. So if people want to say, what are my property taxes, go for it. Really funds one hundred percent of, you know, the police department and-
Property taxes go pretty much exclusively to police and fire.
Correct, and dispatch, so which is police, fire, so seventy-six to seventy-four percent of general fund. Since we do have a pretty equal balance, it, it pretty much funds a hundred percent of, of public safety. All the other fines, fees, intergovernmental collected, funds the rest of it. Sorry, I read over there. Mark had to deal with the same thing with me making fun of you guys for being so expensive. Um, but they are our largest operation, obviously, so we definitely appreciate them.
I like to think of it as a good investment.
That is very true. Keeps us safe, keeps us here. Uh, so this is the expense by function, like I said, public safety, seventy-four percent. And of course, that's not all, all police. It's about half of it, police. The other parts, uh, fire, um dispatch, prosecution services. Uh, next chunk is, is, is um public works with the rest of us making up, um, you know, the last ten percent of general fund expenses by function, including that mayor and council. You guys are one percent really bringing us down.
I love being called off one percenter in that regard. That's great. Thank you.
Take that home with you tonight and make it feel better.
It will.
Yeah, it's rounding up, though. It's actually less than one percent.
You're less than one percenter. Um, so this is a summary of the twenty-five budget. The expenses are projected to be two hundred and seventy-nine thousand higher than the budget. Um, we do fortunately see a, a decrease in, in salaries of twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, you know, health insurance, on the other hand, due to rising costs um with the state program, did increase in the general fund, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Contractual costs decreased by a hundred and forty-two. Um, intergovernmental costs decreased by a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, part of that, a little bit of semantics, we did put in the budget a hundred and eighty-four for North Shore Capital. It really belonged in the capital fund, so that was moved there. So really, our North Shore agreements in the general fund stayed pretty consistent. Um, if it wasn't for the huge increase in North Shore Fire of a hundred and ni- or nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, we would be broke. Um, there was a redistribution of the formula that caused some municipalities to increase substantially. Luckily, because of the formula which has, you know, E A V, calls for service, there's four different categories, Brian, you're gonna know these better than me. I know it's E A V, calls for service, population, and I forget what the last one is. There's a formula that resets every five years, and unfortunately, Brown Deer got hit really hard with a couple hundred thousand dollar increase, which caused our increase to be nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So um when we go over there tomorrow, we can thank them for our less than thousand dollar increase on um about a three point eight million dollar investment. Uh, dispatch actually decreased by eighteen thousand dollars, and then there was nominal increases of eight and seven thousand dollars for the health department and library. It's funny when the library increases higher than fire in total. Um, proprietary funds, um, these are sort of some of the things we talked about with the P S C increase. Um, there hasn't been any rate increases in sanitary and storm. Um, there may not be one for a while, but we want to spend twenty twenty-five to look to see um what our long-term projections are for those funds, so we won't have a fifty percent increase in one or both of them in some year. If we're gonna do what we wanna make it gradual, so that's something we'll look at twenty twenty-five. If there's a small increase in twenty-six, it's because of that. Um, these utilities aren't property tax funded. They are funded exclusively by the utility billing. Um, we do have a lower unbilled amount, which means we're losing less water that's not billed because of our leak detection program we did in twenty-four and the new billing cycle. We went from about fifteen to five percent, so that's a pretty good program. Uh, we will resume the ditching program in twenty-five that we've let go for the last couple of years because of I forty-three, so that does add some cost. Um, it does include, of course, debt service, all water main and all maintenance activities are um gonna continue in the proprietary funds for all of them. Uh, this is a list of the proprietary funds. It does get a little complicated by type. Um, Jessica had to help me out with this yesterday because I'm a little colorblind. It's the top one is the debt, which obviously the, the water fund relies a lot more on, on the debt service because of our one point five million dollar a year water main replacement program than the other two. Um, the next one down, I believe, is intergovernmental. Um, and then other, followed by contractual, so water, it's eight hundred and eighty-six, and then salaries and benefits is the bottom number, so for water, it's six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So this is sort of what totals up all of the expenses for the three different proprietary funds. Uh, special revenue funds, um they are listed here. I will go through these quickly. If someone has any questions, please feel free to stop. This is again, the new refuge, recycling, and yard waste fund. We essentially took the recycling fund, changed the name, um and added revenue and expense for the new agreement with Johns and the new revenue, um and expense for a total expense of about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. What you will see in some of these is, is this difference. In this one, they're primarily the interest that we project to earn in some of these funds is a lot of the difference, particularly in the hotel fund, um, that we just took the interest and we take it and put it in the fu- fund balance. Um, the environmental fund, this used to be the refuse and recycling collection contract. Now it is simply for the remediation of the Bender Road landfill with R E M Park, which is listed there. Um, we do exceed the expenses by a decent amount. Um, our current expenses are about forty-seven thousand. Charlie can probably attest that sometimes that number might be higher, depending if there's any problems at the landfill and there's something we need to do. So we felt trying to build up that balance a little bit and put a little extra revenue in there wouldn't be a bad thing in case something occurs out at the landfill. Um, police acquisition, um, this is really a, a fund that um doesn't get a whole lot of use. It's based on forfeitures and uh Red can probably contest this. We don't see a whole lot of that revenue coming back in a timely manner. We are not buying Big Betty from SWAT. Um, I don't think we have enough money to ever do that.
We have no purchases set right now. We are waiting for one more seizure, but again, we've dealt with some of these processes that can take several years for that to come through.
And we do put in the budget fifteen in, in each of the funds for a total of thirty, again, a deficit of twenty-four. If we need to do anything, we wouldn't bring it forth unless we had the revenue to do it, and we would bring the expense to the council to approve.
What picture is that? What movie is it?
It's from a show called SWAT with uh everyone's favorite Hondo.
Yeah, it's, my son watches it. It's quite the show. I get roped into it too. It's, it's like your classic TV show, where it's like the SWAT team does everything. They do detective work, police work, counseling, you know, drama.
Rescue kittens from-
Social welfare, yeah.
Social welfare check.
Yeah.
Re-rescues, cats, dogs.
And then gang breakup too. So, yeah, that's, that's Big Betty from SWAT. If people watch the show, they would know. Um, crime prevention, I, we talked about this before. This will fund the new canine. I don't know that this is the right kind of canine that we are getting.
That's not our dog.
No, it's not our dog. It's just a picture pulled.
That's not bricks.
It's a picture pulled from the internet, so just trying to throw a, a dog in there. That's, you know, ninety-nine percent of the purchase that we will uh, we'll get. Um, hotel room tax dollars, again, like I said, it's about a million bucks um in revenue and expenses. The difference of eight, uh, the six four eight-six is um the interest earned in there. Um, a portion of this revenue goes to the general fund, which is sixty-four point two-nine, and then the remainder of it goes to discover the North Shore. Uh, one day, we might be hopeful to get the Rosebud Motel here in Glendale. I don't know if anyone knows the Rosebud Motel is a joke too, but it's uh-
Let's hope we're not up that creek.
What about Shits Creek now?
Good, Jim.
Did we change those numbers, I thought, in their agreement, or I'm trying to remember?
What we did is we kept, the percentage has to be kept that way. It's we decided to distribute an equal amount to them on a quarterly basis, and then rectify that based on higher or lower at the next year. But we did increase it. You are correct. If they receive over a million, there was a, it goes to um forty-five and then fifty-five, depending on the amount of um-
Okay, that's, that's what it was. It was revenue, okay.
About that. Yeah, I should put that in here next year. I did totally slip my mind that if we, I forget what the numbers are, but if it's over like one point two million, they get forty, forty-some percent, and then fifty percent at a certain number too.
Is that indexed for inflation, though? I mean, over time, if we're not careful, they'll get there just because inflation.
Yeah, we did not index that for inflation, and that is a good point, but it is a five-year agreement that will expire at that point. And we felt with that five-year agreement that we were comfortable with those numbers, that we would have to relook at it in the future.
I am too. I just think that's the kind of thing that in the future, I'd like to see us index that.
Yep, that's a good point.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll check that. I don't think we did, but that is a good point. Yeah, I don't think Shits Creek Motel, Rosebud's gonna get us a lot of revenue with the, what, seven rooms that they have, but. Um, special events funds, um again, we, we, we increased the contribution from twenty to forty thousand dollars based on the cost of, of the special events. So total revenue seventy-three, total expenses seventy-one thousand dollars. This includes Fourth of July, which is about forty-five thousand of the total seventy-one thousand dollars in special events. Um, health and human services, uh, this is for the retirement, um, post-reti- post-employee benefit retirement um for eligible employees, um, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand revenue, nine twenty-one in expenses. In the past, we were offsetting some of the um expenses with, with revenue. So this fully shows what our revenue and expenses, including the contribution that employees make that used to offset the expenses. We've now shown the total revenue and expense in the draft budget that was presented to you. So in, in total, um, it's about a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expense on an annual basis for um the city to provide post-retirement health insurance um benefits. When you take out the employee contributions, I believe that number's around six hundred thousand dollars. Jessica shaking her head. Um, R E M Park, um, for the continued operation of this hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar operation, we did increase the general fund contribution from twenty-five to forty-two thousand dollars. Um, I do hate to say it, that we continue to sell less and it continues to cost us more to operate the R E M Park, you know, this- R E M Park. You know, this year the staff needs to take a look at what's going right, what's going wrong and bring some solutions.
Open during all of the M S O E baseball games throughout the spring? As well as the Nicolay baseball games? Cause I know we don't hire the staff for the Oasis until sometime in May. But are we open during all the spring events for them? Who staffs that then? Public Works employees or?
Well.
Terrell or Terrell and his son, who's one of our staff members that kind of works year round and Freddie and Freddie, who's kind of year round.
Basically a handful of our current staff.
Rental staff. So like are you around for the rentals if people are requiring city staff because they want something sold, it's usually those three that network in the kitchen. And they're the ones that do the early spring games before our uh, summer staff comes online.
Even being open during all those uh, athletic events where we're not spending money to bring in a band, right? We still don't recoup the money that we spend on all the bands and music acts through the year?
Yeah, I mean, so we looked at it and in particular when we have a music event, we do sell more more in food and beverages, but we never make that amount of what we spend on the band very rarely back and even food sales. And that doesn't account for any overhead of what we have for staff or for food. So it's really becoming hard to make revenue, um, you know, other than when we have those games. If we had a hundred and eighty two games out there a year, um, I think we'd pull in a lot more revenue, but we are just not seeing the revenue come in for the expense that we are making. And those expenses for special events, sorry, Jamika, are in the special events fund, not here in this R E M fund.
I also started to differently and for um, when it comes, when it came to the park. Um, in the sense of putting more variety there and it, I, I really believe that if that continues, there'll be word of mouth to know what's going on. So I'm not worried about it quite yet. Because I think like I've, I never went to the park before this year because it was nothing interesting enough for me to go, no offense, but and I was there three times this year. So um, I think as you start to put more variety into it, that is going to help the park.
I, I would agree. You have to create a lot of reasons for people to come there regularly before it becomes a regular community gathering place. Yeah. So I, I do get what you're saying that at some point, but maybe that's two years down the road. Let's get another couple of seasons of doing what we're doing and seeing how this goes. I mean, we've had very limited musical offerings in the past, you know, a handful of music in the glens and a couple of movie nights was not really enough to make it into a community gathering place. But this year with multiple musical acts every week, movies throughout the summer. There were so many different events going on that brought people to the park. And I think if we continue doing that, we'll, we'll see what we're more likely to see the um, you know, sort of the if you build it, they will come, right? Sorry, my good field of dreams analogy there's.
And we do have in the, in the budget, some money to build a pergola out there, sort of on the patio for some shade. So we think that that might help as well too. So um, we're gonna try to explore options. We'll look at it and, and see um, what will happen. Uh, North Shore Court, again, this is a, a large increase in revenue and expenses. We project a pretty net neutral number of one point three revenue and one point three expense for North Shore Court. That of course, like I said five times already adds the Brown Deer Court branch to the North Shore Court and all proceedings occur here now. We have an additional court clerk as a result of this consolidation. So it's a big change as part of the budget.
Looks like you made a dollar. Don't, don't, don't say you're so short there.
Uh, a funny story. We had, um, we had to get a bunch of temporary easements, particularly on Lydell for our sidewalk program. And in the easement agreements, it says the city shall give you a dollar. We had one guy that actually asked for the dollar and insisted on it before he signed the agreement. So our engineer had to go out. He had to fish out four quarters and he gave the guy four quarters to buy the dollar easement. So pretty funny dollar story. Uh, capital funds.
Pay those in pennies in the future.
Yeah, people will take it. Um, I don't really cover TIF seven and TIF eight. Those are um, the, the technology and the, and the Bay Shore TIF. Um, TIF seven expires a little bit in twenty five and then fully in twenty twenty eight with the city's debt service. Um, and I believe Bay Shore is twenty thirty six.
Now, part of the part that expires in twenty twenty five, we're just gonna use that as a donor to get the rest of it across, correct?
Yeah, and something I didn't have a chance to evaluate yet, but we need to is there's, there's significantly more revenue than expenses coming into TIF seven. I want to know when we can start to maybe pay that off a little early or if we just pay it incrementally. So we have to make a decision and a strategic plan on, on maybe doing that to see what we can do.
I think we're probably far enough along the bonds are callable.
Yeah. I don't think we have enough money to call three point some million dollars over three years. That's, you know, nine million dollars left. But um, we do have a couple million dollars sitting in there that we could hopefully maybe try to eat away at the interest.
Okay.
Uh, so the, the capital plan includes the items that are listed in the tenure capital plan, and this is a link to the PDF. Um, that was provided as the budget that lists all the capital plans. I will just note a couple of different changes here. We will carry over the core plan, which is a required plan that the city must complete every five years for um, recreational um, um, activities in the city. We did budget twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. Um, the, the cost we received was thirty thousand dollars. We did receive two quotes. Um, Bandoall was the lowest. And it, it came in at thirty, um, which is five thousand dollars higher than what we sort of anticipated, but that was adding that floodplain evaluation area, which was about a five thousand dollar addition to the core plan to understand and them drawing some concepts for what we could do in the um, floodway floodplain area, sort of on Sunny Point. Um, with, with that too, as well as a zoning ordinance review, we have the comp plan. Um, and sort of the idea of this project is to review the comp plan, review our zoning, review sort of standards for um, our zoning code to um, sort of understand what we could do to, to be more consistent with the comp plan. Um, possible amendments to the code. Uh, we are gonna carry over the building software. It's five thousand dollars. We haven't paid that yet. Um, we also recommend um, a website refresh. We are not ADA compliant with our website. I guess there is ADA compliance that Jessica told me about um, today and um, Civic Plus told us too that we need to update our website to be ADA compliant. Um, I, do you know what those are, Jessica?
Uh, some of them are like uh, images in place of text, um, video players with subtitles on it. So if they are unable to read, they can be able to hear um, different contrasting colors, uh, make sure everything on our site is keyboard accessible and not just by mouse, that you're able to navigate the whole site just with the keyboard and um, clickable, more clickable web links. Those are a couple of examples of some of them.
And it's been five years since the website was updated. It does look a little dated. So um, that and then agenda software, which provide a streamlined way to review and approve the agenda items that go in there. So things don't get lost misplaced. Um, it's fifteen thousand. We'd bring back those contracts to the council, um, if you guys approve them. Um, we've estimated a hundred thousand dollars for lead laterals. Um, we paid forty thousand dollars for the five of them this year. We did find out that a lot of the areas that these are in, it's fifty percent principal forgiveness. So we'd really be paying half price for the lead laterals. Again, this is a total estimate on what we feel we would spend. We just wanted to put money in the budget for lead lateral replacements. Um, we put two million dollars in there for floodway floodplain project purposes. This is a hundred percent reimbursable. Again, this is a, a revenue and expense that we are totally estimating on what it would be. It could be five houses. It could be two or zero. Um, and then the D P W air ventilation system in the C I P plan listed this as a six hundred thousand dollar project. We were able to get competitive quotes and get the project cost down to two hundred thousand dollars. So four hundred thousand dollar savings from the C I P plan. Any questions about the capital improvement plan?
What was that about fifty percent um, on the, the water led laterals?
So based on your, the census tract that you have and that we have, that these lead laterals are in, they would be eligible for a fifty percent principal forgiveness. So essentially you get fifty percent of the principal cost of the improvement back based on the um, census tract that they are in and the um, median income.
And that's through what organization from the state or?
Through, I don't know. I think it's through the D N R.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the? So I have one final, well, two final items here real quick. Debt services, um, we talked about this before. We know the four million dollars general fund water we talked about before. And so is the TIF three point one million dollars. This makes up the city's um, debt services payments.
What's the three point? That what's owed on TIF seven?
Yep, that's the TIF seven. Yep.
So that's all we have outstanding is three point one million.
That's three. This is on an annual basis. So there's total two, there's one final payment for the full TIF next year. Um, I believe it's five hundred thousand dollars will expire on that TIF. So it'll be about a two point five million dollar TIF and then twenty twenty eight, those payments will continue until twenty twenty eight.
It's still about ten million owed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have a couple million in, in the bank for it. So we have to decide how and when to distribute that.
Okay.
So the final item I had, which was a new item last year, and this is based on twenty twenty four budgets, which is some of the computer, community comparisons. Um, you know, these are tough to look at, the, not tough to look at. There, it's hard sometimes to evaluate the per capita spending. Um, overall, you know, Glendale is about twelve hundred. The average of the North Shore communities is about um, nine hundred. Um, a lot of that is because of our heavier police need here in Glendale of five hundred dollars per capita, when the average is, is about three hundred and forty nine. So that makes up um, some of that difference. Um, looking at the water sanitary and storm, using a per capita basis is really not that accurate. We have some larger businesses that use a lot more water. So our per capita spending for water, not really accurate way to look at that. Um, but I think one of the, the more telltale signs on this is per capita debt. We're at two forty six when the other North Shore communities are at four fifty four. So it looks like on a per capita basis, we're relying less on debt than a lot of our other communities. And we are pretty close to being right in line in the general fund when you account for the, the police number. So I also did it another way, which is spending per thousand dollars worth of, of E A V. So per thousand of E A V, you know, we spend, you know, in the general fund about six dollars and eleven cents. Everyone else is, is five dollars and nineteen cents. Of course, our police is again, a little higher at, you know, fifty four cents higher than the average. And then our debt, again, this is a good telltale sign per thousand dollars E A V. We're about a dollar seventeen lower, about fifty percent lower than the other North Shore communities. So that general fund are pretty in line and, and pretty good shape. Um, so the public hearing um, is November twenty fifth. We originally planned on the next meeting, the first meeting in November. Unfortunately, um, with the way the numbers came in and the, the deadline notice for the public hearing, we have to push this to the Monday before Thanksgiving, which we'd planned for.
Yes, we printed a certain number of times in the paper and we don't have enough papers between now and the next meeting.
That is correct. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, question, these uh, slides, just email them to us. I know we've went through them, but just having those so we can easily flip through them would be helpful. So I don't have to play back it on uh, YouTube. And, and I know last year we had an ability to like go through the draft budget and just provide some feedback comments using the Adobe feature. That was really handy, I thought. If you could do that again, that'd be, that way I don't have to, you know, snip out pictures and send them over. But thank you for putting this all together. This is again, a great view into everything. And a little comic relief goes a long way as well.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. Well done. And copies of the slides would be great.
Thank you. We'll do that. And thanks to all the staff that did most of the work here.
All right. Any further questions on the budget as presented? All right. Uh, the last item then on our agenda tonight is commission committee, board and staff reports. And I'll go ahead and start online. Uh, Alderman Doherty, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, I guess, except I got to go for the first time to the ball conference and uh, Steve and and Mayor Kennedy were there with me and I thought it was excellent. Got some great ideas, learned a bunch more things about TIF, learned some more things about city debt and just got a lot of good contacts out of it. So well, time well spent.
All right. Thank you. Uh, now we'll go to city administrator.
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, city attorney? Right, uh, police chief.
Just like to let everyone know today was the thirtieth anniversary of Ron Headbenny being murdered on duty for the Glendale Police Department. So we had a good showing uh, this morning, about over thirty current and former employees showed up at the location at Port Febrant's just to uh, show appreciation and uh, Ron's uh, twin brother Don is there as well. So nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. One? Number three?
Nothing this evening.
Five?
Uh, just echoing what uh, Alderman Doherty said, got to travel to Madison for the legal Wisconsin municipalities conference. Um, I think this will be the third time in the wow, eight years I've been doing this, that, that I've gone and it's uh, it's always insightful just to see how other communities do things and I'm sure we'll be bothering um, city administrator Warwick with all of our thoughts and suggestions um, in the coming weeks. Thank you.
All right. Uh, and then my report, um, echoing, I guess, the comment from the two Aldermen who were at the league convention. Uh, I thought it was good. Uh, we had a group text. So we were dividing and conquering, going to different sessions and then meeting up afterwards during breaks and sharing notes. We even went out to dinner and talked about the bunch of city stuff, but even had a chance to hang out and not talk about city stuff. So but it was a good um, uh, good conference. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow uh, at five o'clock, five to seven is the grand opening of the fire department and health department. However, if any of you are available at four o'clock, there's actually a staff recognition for the North Shore Fire Department. So I'll be at that. Um, and speaking, that starts at four and then the uh, open house is at five. Um, early voting is, uh, I'll guess I'll give a little bit of the clerks report. Early voting has been a tremendous success. We're at almost forty one percent of the city that has voted so far. So uh, it's been a very, very steady clip of people coming through here on a daily basis. There's still about nine hundred outstanding absentees. Um, so that's been uh, uh, Megan's been Megan and Abby and Emily have been doing a fantastic job of keeping things moving upfront. We also have a number of poll workers who are working um, who actually pick up hours here in city hall to help just run elections. But uh, there's been long lines and I think that's been a um, uh, it's been positive. Uh, I've heard a lot of good things from, from members of the community who um, the only question I've gotten so many times is why don't, don't we have a Dropbox? And I've had to explain that and also send the link to where I've posted this on social media already as to why we don't have Dropbox. So. All right, um, with nothing else to report, I would entertain a motion to, oh, wait, I have one more, one last thing. This morning uh, was the grand opening of the fourth building on the Johnson Controls campus. So um, Carl and um, Charlie and Ben, you were there too, weren't you? Yep. And Ben and I were there, uh, Steve as well. Um, so um, there was a really good turnout and exciting to see Johnson Controls expand. And uh, with the addition of two hundred and fifty more employees, they used to be the number two employer uh, or work site in the city behind Bay Shore. They are now the largest employer in the city of Glendale. So exciting to see them continue to consolidate. Did you have anything else you wanted to add a moment ago before adjourn?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. All right. I would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Doherty.
Okay.
Seconded by Gelhard. All those in favor of adjourning? I?
I.
Pose no? We stand adjourned.
That everybody.